Technology committee meeting is Wednesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty five at five thirty one P M. We will call, I'm sure Rachel will get everybody, we have Jeff Putnam and Ellen for quorum.
You mean Marissa?
Me and Marissa.
Rachel, Marissa, thank you.
Rachel, you can too if you want to.
I'll get right on that.
All right, we have board members for quorum and everybody else. So first thing, I would like to make a motion for approval of the agenda.
Second.
Favor. Discussion. Post. Alright, approval of the agenda is passed. Second, I'd like to make a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all favor.
Aye.
Post during none, motion passed. Josh, I have your name correct. Anybody on the public line?
Cute cards.
I do not see any.
Alright, we'll skip number five for the public participation, which means we jump right into the next one, discussion next, next steps, and we start with Marissa.
Alright, so yeah, social media update, you can see I included everything in the package, if there's any questions, please let me know, a lot of good pictures this month, good sharing, wanna promote the sharing. I did want to send something out, probably for next year, just about sharing Facebook to Parents Square and vice versa, just so we can get a more of a cross connection there. So, you know, just a periodic post on Parents Square, hey, check out our Facebook for updates, and then likewise on Facebook, reminding parents that they can get important messages on Parents Square. For the most part, our enrollment in Parents Square is really good, you know, we have parents utilizing it, which is great, but it's always nice to get as close to one hundred percent as we can. Any questions?
Do we use any analytic tools to see how many unique families we have across all the social media pages, because obviously as, you know, kids move on, you may still be following a middle school or a Torre Fort school, but your kids are at the high school, do we, do we keep track of any of that? Just to see like how many, the actual reach, because your reach is really only, you know, what our unique visitors are.
Meta might have that, I can look into it.
I was just curious as a data point.
Yep, I can look into that.
I'll have one, how many, how many websites do we have yet to finish, are we done?
We are finished, I was gonna put that in the tech update. So they are officially all live, Torre Ford, so when you first make the website live, it can take up to forty eight hours for like the DNS wording and all that. So Torre Ford's being a little finicky with me, it hasn't gone live yet at the torreford.torrenton.org, but it should be within the next twenty four hours. So that's pretty much what the homepage looks like, I just sent Josh a screenshot, but scrolling down, you know, uniform with the other websites, we have, so Torre Ford has their little smores newsletters that they do, so they have a little featured spot for that, because that's something that is, you know, that, that school typically updates on their website, and I wanted to continue that for them. So they do have like a little smores newsletter featured area, and then it continues with sharing their Facebook content and their calendar and just any fun pictures of the kids. And then Southwest was the other one that still needed to be done, and that one is done too, and same thing, they've got, you know, their Facebook content sharing and their calendar and other photos and, in the parents and families, they can access, you know, school times, lunch and breakfast menus, PTO information, forms, anything like that. So yeah, they are all officially done, and then we'll have to change them all.
Yeah, right.
Well, not all, but you know.
Fair number of them.
Yeah, yeah, so they'll be a little switching up over the summer, but not, not too good to do.
The groundwork has been laid.
Yes, exactly, yes, so we are all up and running with the websites.
Okay, any questions?
I have a tech question, but not a website question, it's not an appropriate time for that, it's part of tech update.
Well, we'll wait for the tech update, or is that all, was that all inclusive?
Um, I have one more tech update, so I kinda wanna move on to that.
Go right ahead.
Um, so over the break, the team went into Vogel Wetmore and put in the Murapi access points that were taken out of the old high school building, so they were repurposed and put in over at Vogel. So that they have the new access points and the eight oh two that one X authentication.
Great.
Oh yeah, little repurposing going on.
Awesome.
I haven't heard any complaints from Peter yet, so.
Complaint to Josh.
Hasn't made it my, my way yet, so ignore that.
Very smooth, we had a couple folks who need help logging in, but that was expected.
Yeah, just getting rid of any access, access networks that we don't need, things of that sort, just trying to streamline it and make it uniform in all the buildings.
Do we have any more, do we have any additional ones left over, this size of the building kind of a thing, do we have, are there more that we can put in other places, or do we expand them all?
Um, not enough that it would cover, yeah, so I'm just keeping them in stock to cover any like dead spot areas, things of that sort, there were a lot of suggestions from the tech there, that, oh, you know, this area could use a little bit more coverage and things like that, so we're gonna look into filling in those spaces.
Great.
Tougher with the older building?
Yeah, I mean the.
Kind of free, doesn't help.
Yeah.
Stein, timber block and brick.
Right.
But we, actually our building's covered pretty well, I think I walked around with my laptop and don't drop out too much.
You don't have especially ceiling tiles, so that is, that is the biggest one for us, we got the drop ceiling in there, so nice and easy installing, and yeah, I think it went.
Alright, so what was your techno weenie question?
Did we, did we finish the SIP transition, is that for the ground castle and the TMS and everything?
Yes.
So when we have an issue, what's the failover time to, to move it, if we have an issue with the SIP ranking now, how hard is it to backseat that service somewhere else? Now that it's done and we were, because that was the big piece you had to get done first, you couldn't do anything else, until you had the ability to do it, what does it look like now if we have to do it?
So it's my understanding that that is still only the Cisco system that is on that failover right now, so that means only new building as a failover. And then the other schools are still on our old NEC system, so ideally, you know, I, I did put that in capital, you know, money to try to get all the other schools on that system, but, so we have two Cisco routers, one at the new building, one at what will be Torrenton intermediate for that failover. So we have the room to expand, we don't have to worry about purchasing new equipment in that sense.
So the NEC system can't look across our dark fiber to the SIP from another building if it needs to?
Things to shoot for.
Yeah, I know, it's very, very antiquated, and our vendors begging me to get rid of it, but it takes money to do that, so, you know, in time, maybe, you know, we can look into doing smaller schools first and, you know, just move on from there.
Thank you.
But they do talk to each other, like the, like, so it will, it'll route to the NEC server, so like, one of the, you know, concerns was like, oh, am I still gonna be able to inter-office dial, like, you know, by extension, they talk to each other, they just don't fail over like that.
Thank you.
Do we know a rough order of magnitude, we had to update all our schools to, what is it, Cisco you said?
Yeah.
To newer phone systems?
Um, I, I don't have a rough number, I could always get one, and then, you know, it also depends on how many desk phones you need versus classroom phones, things of that sort, so.
I think you had it in capital at one point, didn't you?
I, I might have had.
I wanna say it was three hundred and something thousand.
Something, but that, that may have been just for one school, and I don't remember which school.
Okay.
Because I don't think I would have proposed to do it all at once.
And you're still doing the grant stuff, right?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Plut through, zip through grants for.
Absolutely.
Critical communication systems, that type of thing.
Yeah, communications is a little tricky, but we can look into it.
Could follow the safety and security, we still need to communicate.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, yes, yeah. Those are going well too, so by the fall, all of those should be, not all, but a good majority of them, I started looking into the phishing training for staff, so I got all the information, and I just need to go in there and set it all up, you know, add in our users and things of that sort. It's on the list, but, you know, it's a little dizzy right now.
Oh, it's terrifying to see those reports, in our experience.
Yeah, I, yeah, but necessary, right, you know, and I think that'll be the end goal.
Does everybody know what the security awareness she's talking about is, how it works at SAV? It purposely sends emails in batches out to the staff, anybody who's gonna Torrenton network, and it's depending on how, we'll say, sneaky, you might, there's no other way to put it, right? So when we send them out to our customers, we put the logo, we can, you can actually make the fake emails, the templates, and you can put logos for your own company, so if I was the Torrenton company, I could put the Torrenton company logo, you make it look as real as possible, but there's clues, and if it's a fake email, there's an obvious warning sign, so you send these all out at random things, periods of time to all the staff, and the system keeps track of who clicks, and then it takes you to a fake place to put in your credentials in some cases, and it keeps track of who clicked it, realized it, or who clicked it and gave away the store.
Yeah.
So, and that's a great tool for Rachel and her team, because it helps focus that education, some of the systems, if you give away the store, put you in the I T jail.
Yes.
And they say you must complete this training module, because you, technology is great, and it can solve ninety percent of the problems, but the person is your best line of defense, so that, that's the purpose of that training, is to train the person at the frontline who can give away the store in like six clicks and one password.
And that is what this program does, it would put you in a, in a retraining.
Verbal jail, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know, Michael Wilson's not requesting Apple gift cards, so.
I was just gonna say, Peter. Josh, don't be blocking that email. Exactly, call Galaxy, Rachel.
Well, I mean, they get people like that all the time, so it's unfortunate, but definitely things you gotta look out for.
Important, but necessarily, frustrating, but important and necessary steps.
Absolutely. So that's about it, other than not just getting ready for the big, you know, move.
Okay. Speaking of the move, do we have any critical infrastructure here that needs to be dealt with over the summer?
Tech wise?
Yes.
Um, I wouldn't say critical, no, th- this building is, is pretty separate.
Okay, there's that switchboard downstairs.
Yeah, I don't know about that one.
That's a great point, Mr. Kisko, that is classic, and that is high tech.
Was the operator out there?
That's the new phone system, I thought you know, I know, it's.
I like it.
Yeah.
Alright, we'll move on, everybody, any other questions? You have a question, Ellen?
No.
Comment. She had a comment, no.
Okay, excellent, then we'll move on from technology and go to Mr. Vogel in facilities.
Okay, so I shared with you guys, a little late to dance, but we still got here, just a list of the program I've been using to try to keep track of our day-to-day activity and the things that we do. That's another one for myself here, here's the first one, so, you know, I was hoping that you could take a look at it, and if you had any questions on it, on, on, you know, again, we aren't doing much in capital right now. Our couple of capital projects are, well, it's not in capital, our retro commission project's going well, we are up there, you, you see it on here too, also, when we had to fire up the chiller, there were some other things that we had to do to the chiller, nothing to do with the retro, everything to do with keeping the building cool, but we were able to start it up early, so a good thing they were in there doing it, because we fired this chiller up early, and we had to, and we found a few issues that we're taking care of right now. The outdoor, the outdoor unit, that water flows through the pan was leaking substantially, it's just going on the ground, but you can't have it leaking, so I had our roofing contractor that we use come up and seal it up for us, so we, we took care of that, and they're, they're moving forward with the retro commissioning now, but there's other things with the chiller that we're, we're doing to, you know, kinda update it, get it clean, it's called punching out, where you clean out the tubes and cements, much like your boiler, or any other piece of equipment that, to our records, has never been punched out, never been cleaned, so.
And where is this?
At Torrenton Middle School, middle school chiller, yeah, that's the retro program up there, I walked through with those guys, and we checked out all the VFDs and, and went through a new B M S program, which is the Building Management System, which is, shows all your equipment, we've, we had one there, but it was never implemented, so we're implementing it at the same time now, which is, which is working out well. We, the gentleman that was there retired, we have Dean Barth is now the new custodial two up there, so he's been able to kinda jump in on that a little bit, and, and he's starting to get the hang of it, so we've been training him through that, through that process, but it all has to do with that retro commission project we're doing. Our T M S roof, a little bit of a delay as far as going out to bid, but that will be going out to bid, do we get a date on that?
Hopefully by the end of the month.
By the end of the month, some paperwork issues that we had to kind of work through to get it there, so.
Ours are with D A S.
I can address that, I mean, Donna and Dean and I, actually, it's, it's a huge task when you're putting the stuff into the system and to update it, and, I mean, I'll take full ownership, a couple of items were ours, but it was more not as having the document, that they wanted the document signed, and then they wanted it stamped, and they wanted it verified, and things of that nature, so while we had the document, and while, you know, for example, minutes of a board meeting where you would approve something, those are approved by the board, those are legitimate, and we have the date, but they wanted them initialized, right? So when Donna and I, exactly, Mr. Kisko, so when John, when Donna and I first uploaded them, we were like, okay, but they're approved, they're on the website, and they said, no, they didn't, so then we had, Donna had to come back and repopulate all those documents, and it wasn't as if it was just that one page, because you have to actually do it as a bundle, so yes, to answer your question, Glenn, it was, it was some of our mistakes, but it wasn't a mistake where we didn't have the correct information, it was more getting it down to that really, really nitty gritty level, and Dean and Donna and I have, I don't know, I think we've spent more hours on that roof project than we would.
Well, I'm gonna be honest with you, Ross has been you and Donna more than me, and I'm kinda sitting through that part.
That means you're delegating well.
So we're happy to say, though, it is, it's, it's where it should be.
Yes.
It's where it should be, and we're moving along.
So under the mark.
Yes.
Ultimately, yep. And again, we're just, we're, we're going around each one of the buildings, trying to figure out what we're going to need for this transition period that we're going through, so we're spending some time, you know, just a little bit of makeup, you know what I mean, some floors that need to be done, walls that need to be patched, toilet partitions that need to be installed, especially at the middle school, getting it ready, so we're, we're working on that as we speak, and of course, moving everybody, that's probably been seventy-five percent of my time this week has been on the moving aspect of it.
How was the morale with the staff overall?
We don't ask, so we don't know.
He told me I couldn't speak.
Getting it, getting it, and I blame, but it's just a matter of timing, you know, there's only so much you can do in a day trying to gather this information, you know, you, you think you have it until another element pops in, oh, what about that, what about that, well, yeah, you know, so.
I don't wanna speak for Sandy, but I've heard that the teachers were very happy that the board approved that last day as a, a move day, and they were very appreciative of that.
Yes.
So.
They are very happy that they have that time to pack and move, they're just a little antsy about their boxes, and when those boxes are coming, so.
Dean's making them right now.
Yeah.
It's also important, I mean, we still have school for another month, so it's important, yes, we want boxes, and we wanna start packing, but we want our classrooms to be welcoming to kids as long as possible for that last day.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so I think you were talking about this list.
Yeah, you got anything?
No, it's a pretty long list, so this is just everything that.
Well, you know what, I mean, Peter just, Peter just came up, came to me and was talking about, you know, still that.
It's on the list.
No, it's on the list, it's on the digital list, it didn't make it to the paper copy yet, so I get a call, I throw it on here, and I kinda go from there, and try to track it that way, whether it's complete, incomplete, I did hide out some of the costs and things of that nature, I just figured you guys take a look at that to see what we do.
I'm excited about this, because I see some things on here that have been on the list in my head for a while, you know which one it is. I've been saying it for a couple of years, like, this is great, Dean, that you guys are, you're, you're starting to make this list of things that need to be addressed, and whether they're, you know, what the priority is, when they get done, but it's the things that, when you walk into a school, if, if I walk into a school, walk down the hallways, walk into our important rooms, where we invite the public to, and I look up and see that the ceiling at Vogel's been coming down for the last five years, this is great that you guys are taking the initiative now to, to correct this stuff, because it shows that we take pride in the buildings and the people who are inviting in, they lose that, you guys don't take care of anything, so this is great, thank you for putting this together and making an initiative to take care of those little things, either the list will get exhaustive over time.
It is, there's a lot of detail here that you'll never see, but a lot of the stuff is just what you said, when you walk in, you know, what the windows look like, what, what the floors look like, what the ceiling looks like, what the stairwells look like, things like that for just, you know, and when I say makeup, that's probably not the right word, I mean, this stuff is tough enough to, the upkeep when it's new, let alone when it's thirty and forty years old, they try to make it look good, so, you know, the guy, the staff is doing a great job, I've changed some systems with the staff on how they clean, and, and things that we're using in some equipment, and they've been fantastic, they've all bought in, and it's been.
I see T M S auditorium leak, and when I go to, I'm at T M S for some of the events now, and it happens to be raining.
Yeah.
You see the boxed off buckets and the, these are just the things that are.
Is that portion of the building covered under the, the roof project?
So what he's talking about is gonna be the new roof, and the gymnasium, that's gonna be the new roof, so I had the.
It's not, not a hundred percent of that roof is part of that bid?
No, no, the flat roof is done, so the, so, anything that's stayed.
Okay.
Pitched is getting done, all the flats been done before I got here.
Okay.
But we were up there the other day, and we noticed that some of the roof drains were not cleaned out, and water, it was puddling already, and that's just the recipe for disaster, once you get puddling on a roof like that, it gets up into places where it's not supposed to, so we went through, we cleaned all the roof drains out, and.
Especially in winter, especially in the winter.
Yeah.
Get all the crap coming off the trees.
And that's what it was, it was all leaves and stuff.
To that point, so some of these things that you're noticing that we may not have had a rigorous maintenance schedule for, like the, the chiller tubes and things, are we going back now, we circle back to our contracts with our vendors who perform this maintenance, are we planning to integrate some of these things so that we don't make this burden on you?
Some of this is, some of this isn't a yearly thing, to clean these tubes, to be honest with you, and I've been in the industry a long time, I, I wanna say. Yeah, maybe once every fifteen years, but you usually get to replace the chiller after twenty-five years, to be honest with you, and it's not because of the tubes, we've noticed some of the flow difference in this, because of the retro that we're doing, and we're saying, you know what, there's gotta be something other than the fifteen other things we checked, so we're gonna go, go and clean the tubes out, because that's all it really could be at this point, so, something like that, probably not, I wouldn't say we would be cleaning. Um, so something like that, probably not. I wouldn't say we would be cleaning tubes on trailers every five years.
But is it going to?
There's a lot of stuff on here that will be coming up more regularly. It'll be coming up in the contracts, like you said, the contracts that we have written, um, need to be a little bit more defined and a little bit more, you know, which is going to cost more money, by the way. Um, but it's, but it's going to be in there. It's not going to be that extra cost. It's going to be a contract cost.
But if it means that it's taken care of the right way, we get the efficiency for it, having it been working.
Right.
And if it lasts an extra five years, that's great. If it doesn't, at least it was efficient the entire way. So. These are, are you building a, a new schedule of things, you know, like a, every fifteen we do this, every kind of like the playbook for maintenance?
Yeah, it's, 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 it's one of the things I, um, I, I write down on the side of the sheet is, is, uh, time-wise, when it has to be done, annually, yearly, monthly, into that nature.
Great, thank you. Good, back to you. Is that it?
Any other questions?
Roof update projects, this would be your projects update.
Yeah.
And contract renewals and revisions.
Uh, the, the, the one revision is, um, because of the landscaping up at, um, up at the high school. Uh, we did get some numbers, um, from Jespersen. So you gotta remember Jespersen's contract is up next year, but Jespersen's contract every year went, an increase of a certain amount. Okay? Um, that being said, the total amount of savings that we should have seen is, uh, as far as labor and, and what, what their contract is, is about seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. Okay, credit from them doing the baseball fields and doing everything at the high school that they were supposed to do. Now, there's an additional cost of stuff that we bought on our own, the material he used. So his contract now is him installing it. Um, lime, clay, paint, we bought. So there should be an additional, in the neighborhood of twenty-eight to thirty thousand there, savings. Because we're not buying that this year. Okay?
Yeah, but that's outside his cap. That's outside.
It's outside the cap, but it's what we spent on the fields. That's what we sat, spent on the field. So I, what I want to give you is, we should be saving in the neighborhood, you know, of, of, uh, I'm sorry, that was fifteen, in the neighborhood of thirty-two thousand total. So it was about, sorry, it was about fifteen on material, about seventeen on their contract work. So somewhere in the neighborhood of about thirty thousand dollars. Now, there's an increase, there's an increase in his, the contract this year. So it's not quite the true number, right? But just to let you know, we save on that. I have given us a credit of that. Saying that, there's also a scope of work that I have numbers from him to do that I want to see what, you know, I want to see what it looks like to clean up areas like along the fence line that we never used to clean up, where the track and field is because nobody ever went by it. It was always off the side. Now it's right there. You drive down a new road to get to the back, you look to the left and there's this nasty fence that vines and weeds and grass that we never paid attention to because it was never being used. So I'd like to get that cleaned up, the tree line along the highway. Get that cleaned up also because it's, you know, looks like crap, to be honest with you.
Who's responsible for the fields at middle school?
Uh, we are.
I just, so talking about material and clay and you, and that's not quite baseball. So when you drive into the middle school and you look over at the fields, they look like they probably need a little TLC to start the season.
So.
The ones in the, as your first.
Wait, that's on the Jespersen's contract.
Well, yes, that's what I said. When I say that, I, I, we don't do any outside work. I'm sorry. I didn't know if you met like the little league or.
We were on the Jespersen topic. I was just trying to figure out.
Yes, Jespersen handles that field there. So what he does, and we had him up there, is he cuts the grass, he clays the field, all that is done. It, uh, our high school team has been practicing up there, went to middle school. So we put some time into getting that field playable, um, after winter. The biggest problem with that field is right now is dandelions. And we haven't treated or put any line down in those fields since anybody knows. Now, I don't know what you do at your house.
High school is the same way, just to, just to throw that in there. It was a C E L.
It's C E L. I, and I, and I went over it. So we're, you know, again, it costs to go in and line those fields and to maintain them. And we've never done it ever, ever. And I know my house, I don't have any dandelions because I put a lot of chemicals on that floor, and I, and I kept, but line down to, to prevent this from happening. So, you know, it costs, I did get a number from him to see how much it costs us to line it and kind of keep those dandelions down. And if we have it in, you know, our general.
Is this, is this something that as we're, we've done a good job adding some additional staff to your team for next year? Is this something that we may, some of this stuff we may be able to tackle on our own?
No, line in the field, not even equipment. We, we don't have any equipment to handle something like that. That's a pretty big field. This would be something that, you know, may, maybe when we put this contract together, we, we put it as an alternate on there. And we get a place, what it'll cost every year, maybe every two years to do it, to get these fields back to sort of looks like a field and not a weed factory. There's not one of our yards, I'm gonna be honest with you that. There's not one of our properties that, um, I'm proud of, hate to say that.
I'm just wondering, you pull in that even like the dirt sections of the field seem to have weeds in them.
Well, he's supposed to turn those fields over twice a year.
Yeah, he does. He turned them and he actually brought clay in this year. Uh, you know, we didn't use a lot of clay at the high school. So we ended, you know, go up to middle school, get that ready because the high school's practicing on it. The middle school baseball team, they got a lot of use this year.
Are they using the ones deep in? Or are you talking about the ones out front?
The ones closer to the parking lot.
Okay.
We used them about thirty-five years ago for women's softball.
So his credit for, they said at a high school, seventeen thousand dollars. He was at the mow and he was at to take any care of any fields. The seventeen thousand out of two something, two, I want to say two twenty, two thirty?
Yeah, it's up to this year. Yeah, it's up to that number this year. I don't remember the exact number. So we just talked about it the other day. She can't talk.
It's gotta be if you added all the square footage up. I was, high school is probably close to thirty-five, port forty percent of his entire mowing. And fifty percent of his field maintenance, call it two fields versus two fields up to the middle school. That was it.
Well, then middle, middle school's got that whole section in the back of this. There's two sets of fields.
Colangelo, Colangelo, the border bed's not responsible for Colangelo.
The one up on the other side?
Yeah.
Now, when you come into, you pull in, you got the soccer fields and baseball fields, right? And then you go to further into the school and you're part-time with the auditorium, there's a set of fields back there.
That's not part of.
That's not ours.
No, that's Colangelo.
Okay. All right. All right, anybody else have any questions? Topics for future meetings. Stick with the, anything else you want to add? We get a budget, we really can't really have too many things in there, right?
Yeah, I mean, if I come up with anything, I could probably squeeze it in technically.
All right.
I guess we'll ask about how the roof went. So if it goes out the end of the month, was it open for two week period?
Uh, it was from.
Twenty days.
We won't get it back by, we won't get the results back by the second week, week of June.
If it goes out, we, you know, there's a possibility.
Well, it's open for fourteen days.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, and then, and then so.
That's past our second Wednesday of the month.
We're gonna get to that open day.
Right, so defining end of the month, like I'm open for the twentieth, but, um, that, that would.
That's next week.
Right. Right, I'm being hopeful. I have a direct line with the person. I've been calling daily.
We're not expecting construction of this to begin this summer in the armpit. When it's, I know it's always been the hope, but as the timeline slips.
I mean, I'm sure they're gonna want to start something, whether it's, whether it's, you know, getting equipment there or getting a layout or I'm sure they're not going to want to wait. Because it's going to put you off a whole nother year if we don't. They're gonna have to, I mean, listen, from July till November, December, work could be done, you know?
Even while our kids are in.
Well, you gotta, again, what could be done.
Sure.
What can be done, what can be done is another story.
We'll keep the roof up there, laid on there just in case.
Yeah.
Fingers crossed.
I like your projects update. You want to just keep building on this and?
Yeah, that's very simple for me to do too. That's why.
And you can highlight red things or.
Yeah, and as things get done, you won't see them.
Is there a date column? So we, you might go, we could just see when the date was entered. So then as the new ones, we wouldn't have to.
You'll see the ones that are done. How about that? The ones that are complete. Because sometimes I don't get the date in when I'm doing.
What are you using for this?
It's called Notion.
Notion?
Yeah. It's a free, it's a free app that, a bit of a learning curve, but you can do a lot of stuff with it.
All right. I guess we can scratch the contract renewals or invasions. Something came up in my head the other day that we talked about a lot last year. We haven't really covered it much this year, but last year is the big thing about the air quality and testing and all that.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that still, uh, part of the state thing?
It is, it is. So we're looking at that also.
We're, we're not really gonna talk about that just yet.
It's the close rivalry.
I remember.
And it's still being legislated and flawed.
Is it?
Well, because of the cost factor, because there's not many contractors that were certified to do it and everyone trying to rush to get it done. That's why they kept delaying the end date, end date.
So the, the, there's no end date. It's still being.
It's, it has to be being examined as we've talked about it just now and Dean's talked to a couple of other people in, you know, in his boat. But there, there is no definitive end date because of that. So we're not.
We'll still put on that until.
Especially at the student school.
And if I recall, wasn't it like two X what we had carried for a number back in the day?
Yeah.
For building.
Yeah, we have two brand new schools. Uh, percentage of.
We will talk about it in September.
That will be perfect.
That's all I can think of. Did anybody think of anything else that they would like to add that's important?
For next meeting?
Yeah. We got one more left. That's it. Huh?
We get one month off?
Say pizza. Pizza party next meeting.
Nice.
Sounds good. But I'm just done.
All right, comments, we're gonna go to yours. Let's start with you, Jeffrey.
I like, I like, I like everything. This project list is great. Thank you. Thanks for all the effort. And, uh, Rachel, good luck with, uh, with all the work you have left to do coming into the end of the year.
Great meeting. Shout out to Dean and Rachel there. Beyond busy getting ready and the next several months are going to be even busier. So kudos to them. Thank you to everyone else. Good meeting.
Excellent.
Good meeting.
Great meeting. Great meeting, thank you.
Good meeting. Next month, there's Rachel's report. Look for, um, Vogel, what more Wacky Wednesday, including tie day today. I could do something different. And I feel like I need to explain why I'm wearing a bow tie. But great meeting. Good, good work from you too. Thank you for keeping up with everyone.
Good meeting. Good meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kisco. Meet your standards.
Yes.
All right, very good. Go to a chair.
Second.
See you in a bit.
Bye.
Thanks.